All right. Good morning, everyone, and welcome. Today is Monday, July 24, 2023, welcoming you to a work session of the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County. We had a pleasant, hopefully, everybody had a pleasant, fun recess, but it's time to get back to work. We're going to start with the invocation. Pastor Max DeSeer of Rendezvous Christ Church of Bradenton is going to lead us in prayer, after which Commissioner Jason Bearden, a Marine Corps veteran, will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're able at this time, please stand.
Gracious Father, I thank you this morning for waking up each person here today. I pray that you will guard and guide our councilmen, councilwomen, our Board of County Commissioners as they meet and discuss matters with regard to our city. I pray that at each meeting, each one of us grow wiser, stronger, and better, that we choose to do what is moral and rational. I pray that with a lucid mindset, that their motivation in everything they do is for the good of the public and not their own. I pray, Father, that we will be part of the solution to solve our city's problems and make good policies that address them. Help them to be competent and excellent in their governance. I pray that you direct their paths, that they will have stable and supporting families and friends that will alleviate the burden that they carry. Most of all, I pray that each one of us have an encounter with you that will change our life for the better. Open our hearts and our minds and renew us. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, gentlemen. Pastor, that was an excellent prayer. Thank you, sir. All right. We'll start off with citizen comments on future agenda items. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to address the board on any of the items we'll be discussing in today's workshop? All right, sir, yes. Please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Josh Tomlinson, Manatee County. I'd like to just speak briefly about residential canal dredging. It's on the agenda today. Commissioner Ballard, thank you for helping with that. A report was done about six years ago regarding the status of residential canal dredging. Some time ago, and Commissioner Ballard has that report available if you'd like it. The county made the decision to no longer be involved with residential canal dredging in any way. Since that time, there have been no large sale, large-scale projects completed in all of the waterfront neighborhoods around here that the neighborhoods do not own the canals. So what I'm asking the commission to do is to look back at what the historical practice was within the county and become involved with the dredging of the residential canals. Because as of now, the last ones that were completed were done so about 20 years ago. There are many that were prior to that that haven't been done in more years than that. Most residential homeowners think that the county does that, and it did at one point, but no longer does. So that was a decision made by a commission many years ago to no longer do that. Tom Yarger, who is still a county employee, I believe most of you know, with property management, he's very familiar with the process. He ran the last large-scale dredging projects that were completed. So he may be a good resource for you to tap for information with regards to that. But I would just ask that the commission consider re-implementing the policy that was decades of standing that did allow for citizens to get their canals dredged on a regular maintenance basis, which is somewhere between 15 or 20 years. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment at this time. And we'll start working our way through the agenda. We'll start with Public Works Director Butzo.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chad Butzo, Public Works. First item on the agenda is the canal maintenance dredging topic. And the only thing I have is just to present with a couple pieces of information on the history of that and then determine where that conversation desires to go going forward. So if I can go to slide number two, it is a map that looked great on my computer, but as I was starting to look at here, it was reminding everybody where the areas that we have in the past conducted a canal dredging project. Just running through those, up in North County, we had the Bay Colony, Highland Shores, and the Manaly area. And then along the Manatee River, we have on the South Shore, the Warner's Bayou Cluster. Then out on Palmasola/Cortez, we had San Remo and Coral Shores, the Bryn Mar, I'm sorry, Braulwin and Bullies Creek in South Manatee County. And then that little item there on the Braden River is Braulwin, Braulwin-Palms Canal out there. It's actually east of Mixons going down 26th Avenue, just before you get to 45th Street East. If I can go to the next slide. So, wow. The history of Manatee County dredging comes back to a number of resolutions instituted by the county in place. And so pre-83, I don't have a good understanding of whether we did it or didn't do it. But in 83, there is definite reference to if we would do it. It needed to be specifically a little more along the lines of what we call WCIND rules today, where there needed to be the real public purpose of a public boat launch down that canal to do so. But in 1993, a similar ordinance to resolution to what we did in the past that allowed MSBU-based dredging of these residential canals. MSBU-based dredging said that the overall cost of the canal would be assessed to the property owners that benefited from said dredging. That program was slightly modified in 97, and some projects were conducted under the 93 resolution, some under the 97 resolution. Basically, during that time, a lot of the projects, when they came forward back to the board to determine their final assessment, the amount that would be charged to what we call the assessment role of what the property would pay off over the 10 years, there was a lot of dissatisfaction from the quality of the work that was done, how long the perception of the work that was done was going to last. And at the time, during those boards' times, some of those obligations of cost were set aside and paid by the county. And that ultimately led to a number of discussions going forward. As you can see, in 2010, in the 2011 range there, we had continued to converse with the county attorney's office at times. We at least validated during that time where the county is not obligated, not required by law, to do this type of dredging. And ultimately, in the 2011, 2012 range, the staff had proposed an alternative program called the Outfall Dredging Program. It currently still exists in our stormwater engineering budget. It started initially with $150,000 annually, has been increased to $250,000 annually. And in your 2024 operating budget, it is going to $400,000 annually. And that is to directly clean locations of where we call our 177 outfall pipes that discharge into these types of waterways, where not only are they navigable, but they also receive stormwater discharge. And that is the intent to say the majority of the discharge that comes from the pipe, from public ditches, from public roads, is being removed in a cyclical manner. And then kind of went along with it in 2012, the program was rescinded. The table there does show you the years in which the canals that were dredged were dredged, and also the number of parcels that are involved. Unless it's one of the, obviously, you can tell with San Remo, Coral Shores, and kind of the Bay Colony, unless it's truly a designed boating community, the number of parcels involved is fairly small just by the nature and how the areas were platted. So that is an exceptionally brief history of what we are doing right now. I can add that the prices for doing the work of the outfall cleaning program have increased dramatically. Back in 2012, we were estimating $72 a cubic yard. Current price of one of the programs that we're doing this year is $180 a cubic yard. So if anything, from a staff point of view, we feel a more concerted effort on the increased funding in that outfall dredging program to keep the cyclical nature going is a good way to go. But with that, I have more materials with me to help with potentially more questions. But I mean, that is how we have gotten to where we are right now.
I'll start off with a couple of questions since no one's on the board. First, Chad, would you mind, because I know that there are going to be a lot of residents, particularly in my district, who are going to watch this, either they're watching it now or they'll watch the recording later. Would you mind explaining an MSBU and sort of giving a rough definition and also get into the cost sharing and that sort of thing for them?
A very high level, because I'm not going to play the attorney, but essentially, there is a boundary that is drawn, a boundary of properties that is drawn that say you will participate within this project. The reason you're included in those boundaries is because it is perceived that you will receive a benefit of the completion of said project. Typically, in this case, from a dredging, you must have part of your property that fronts the water body in question that is being dredged. Therefore, that would have an increase either in your property value, your quality of life, the ability to use your property, county attorney, but good enough on that one?
And there's, once the decision is made, there's no opt-in, opt-out. You're voluntold that you're participating in this program once the county commits?
Correct. Once it's established absolutely that way, I do not have the direct history within this program from back in that nine and 10 timeframe. I joined the county in 2007. Under other special assessments like street lighting, sewer, and other things, there were surveys that were conducted. I don't recall if that was done back in the day. Typically, the board by policy had requested that at least there was a 67% support to generally move forward. I do not believe that is required by law. The board can establish if we're going to do this, and there is that benefit, you can move forward with any level of support.
How was the assessment imposed and collected?
Typically, it is the final costs, or an estimated role is put together based on the design and the permit. Work is conducted, final costs are realized, and then an adjustment to the resolution is brought back to the board to represent the final costs of the project. And then depending on how it was set up, whether it's a 10-year or a 15-year payment.
What percentage of the costs are absorbed by those specific homeowners? And what percentage is absorbed by, say, the county general fund and, you know, all residents of the county?
As designed, other than the way it was constructed in the past, all the construction costs were intended to be absorbed by the property owners. And that was what was dealt with as contentious back in those days, where the dredged area silted in sooner than even before the final role could be brought back before the board. Some of the boards lessened the amount to the point of the county participated 30%. Sometime, in certain cases, they participated 60 or 80%. It was all over. In the end, each dredged area was different by the amount that the county participated. The later in the program, before it was rescinded, the more the county tended to participate on that. The intent was, it is a program that was desired, intended to be paid for exclusively by the people benefiting from the program.
Sort of tying into that, you referenced the length of time that it seems to, you know, it takes for it to fill in again, varies depending where we are. And I understand that because, you know, places like Palmetto Point, Coral Shores, San Remo, they don't have stormwater systems in place. Those locations were, well, they were mangrove swamps prior to becoming, you know, canal homes. So those laws weren't in existence. So those canals are taking stormwater straight off of the street. So I assume that we probably have silt traps and all kinds of things going on in there. But for the most part, I assume those canals are taking on a lot more silt than would be places like, you know, the inlets or some of these bayou locations. Palmasola Boat Basin, I'm sure, is taking on more silt than most places, because Cedar Hammock Creek spills into it, same with Bullies Creek. So I guess my question for you is, based on the amount of silt that is being collected in these navigable waters as a result of primitive stormwater or no stormwater systems, were you taking that into consideration when it came to the cost sharing?
Not being part of the original structure on that, sir, no. Humble opinion, I don't think I have a straight analysis on that. But definitely, the dredge locations that are part of a overall larger stormwater system probably have a bigger chance of having additional materials deposited from them than just a straight inlet to the, inlet to the bay, especially anything that has any sort of stream activity. Those are just naturally items coming through pipe systems that where we have an opportunity to do street sweeping. I think we do a better job of capturing the materials. The question is, how much comes through the deposition from stormwater? And how much is a general natural tidal effect is, has always been the debate?
Always open for debate. Mr. County Attorney, what is the MSBU's role when it comes? I know that there are many potential liabilities as you do this, right? Equipment bumping into people's docks, bumping into people's boats. The amount of, we're only doing the middle, really, 25% or so, or the middle 50%, I apologize, of the canal. And so then you have the outside, you know, basically, a person owns and has rights to 25% of the canal on each side. The middle 50% is considered navigable, and that's the percentage, that's the portion that we're dredging, correct?
Well, it depends.
And then what is the role of the MSBU? Should there be old derelict seawalls that are still standing? I guess they're not derelict, but when there's, when you have so much shift in material at the bottom of the canal and those seawalls become destabilized or equipment, you know, damage happens to people's docks or vessels, who is ultimately liable for these things, sir?
Well, there's a lot in there, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, that's a pretty, that was a very thoroughly worded question. The, first of all, the Home Rule Act 12501 Florida statute says that counties can establish dredging programs for drainage and navigation. That's a very solid, you know, point of local government law in Florida. The issue that you run into with these projects is what is a public improvement versus what is a private improvement? Because even if you're using an MSBU to finance it, and an MSBU is a financing mechanism, it's a way to put an assessment on the tax roll, just like a CDD does. Even if you're using an MSBU to finance it and the property owners are paying it, it still has to be for a public improvement. And what you run into, and you can, you know, you can kind of, if you bounce this off of WCIND, they have their own view of what's a public dredging project and what is a private dredging project. In the past, the county has done a little more than the navigation districts have been willing to do because our role is broader. But typically, and this is where you get into some dissatisfaction with the property owners, we will dredge the navigational channel, but that doesn't get to their docks and their seawalls. So they have to go to the contractor and ask the contractor to do additional dredging at their personal expense to get their dock cleared and get up to their seawall. And that's something I can tell you from experience that boat owners often have to pay. If you want your slip dredged, you know, that's on you. So that kind of deals with a lot of your issues because typically, our contractor is dredging the navigational area and not getting up to the wall and the dock and the boats. So the liability, when they, when he goes outside of that area, is on the contractor and the individual property owner that is contracted for that additional dredging. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Commissioner Ron and Commissioner Ballard are on the board. Commissioner Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Chad.
Good morning.
Good to see you. Real quick, on, when we're going in and doing a dredging project, how does the waters of the United States affect our ability to do what we want to do? Being now that the federal government has put back in place the waters of the U.S., so if we're going to go dredge Bullies Creek, is that going to fall under that? And then we have to fall under some kind of federal mandate? Being that's going to be considered waters of the U.S.? Or do we still be able to follow our own statutes and Florida statutes that are set forth for us to do dredging?
The key, the key for what we're doing, it's not permit-less work that we do, but because we're calling it a maintenance dredge, there has been an established permit in each of these locations at one time, preferably based on original construction, that says we're essentially just trying to restore a previously permitted area to as close to its original permitted state as possible. So we go through the process, we secure a permit, and that's why our depth that we're dredging to is modest, but it's within the range of what the original permits of these locations were.
Okay, so.
Chad's referring to a core permit.
And I, under the current configuration, I don't recall if it's true core or if it's the DEP 404 category.
Is it 404?
Okay, so it's straight.
Non-delegable. It has, you got to go to the core. Yeah, if it's in the title base and it's non-delegable.
So anything that we're going to do on dredging would necessarily roll up to the core for approval before we could dredge, correct?
That is correct. If it's in the title base, then you have to get the corps' permission.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Chad.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard?
Thank you, Chair. So I know that obviously costs have changed immensely since 2011. Do we have any kind of estimation as to what the assessment would be on individual homeowners for these types of projects?
Looking back over time, depending on where, which project it was, if I just apply the two and a half or three and a half times, we could easily be in the $15,000 or $20,000. For what would be spread over the assessment period. But that's a, that's a straight guess. But that's just applying the cost inflation factor on a previous assessment cost.
Commissioner Ron?
Chad, getting back to the core permit, can the corps deny us a permit to dredge a canal?
I would think they absolutely could. I don't think of a reason why they wouldn't, especially the way that we're, the way that we're doing it by saying this is a maintenance dredge. I just need permission to go in and to do an activity that was previously permitted.
Okay. I mean, being that we have to deal, the corps is so much fun to deal with anyway, you know, just on that aspect. So, so once we get, our permit, our permit is basically a broad permit to do a maintenance dredge on a canal. And the corps and the federal government can't step in and say, we're not going to let you do that, even though the citizens want it done and we need to do it. They're not going to step in and say, hey, you can't do this because we don't like you to do this.
Correct. Yeah, this would be, the activity, because it's maintenance, is it's previously permitted, and then they really regulate just your means and methods.
Okay. Thanks, Chad. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, sir. No one else is on the board. Commissioners, are there any other thoughts or comments on canal dredging? Chad, do you have any final thoughts?
Since that 2012, we have been working through our outfall dredging program. It has been growing in cost, so it has been slowing in cyclical activity. We had been asking for the increased budget, and we did get it. But the way that the last two years of cost have gone, I would probably be remiss if I didn't say we're probably still losing ground, probably a higher increase in budget in that program to keep the, the dream was always a 10-year cyclical. So if we cleaned an outfall within less than 10 years, we would be back. Again, we're probably in closer to a 15-year cycle on that right now.
If these, if we were to do this, and MSBU's are formed, ultimately, it's a, MSBU is a financing mechanism, as the county attorney stated. So ultimately, where is the original capital outlay for this coming from? What is the funding source?
Depends on, I believe, how the original resolutions were dealt with. There's different ways. We did some research back in the 2009 and then the 2011 work sessions. Different counties established a basic MSBU upfront that put an amount of funds in place to do the research, to do the paperwork and things. The way ours had previously been done until the construction costs were put into place, that was about all that was levied to the property owners. So the, the design, the bidding package, and the permits weren't necessarily rolled into the spreading of the assessment role.
Okay. But what funds the MSBU?
Say again, sir?
So what originally funds the MSBU? Is the county funding this? Is, are you?
Those upfront costs, correct, sir. That would be county funds.
It's county funds. And then they're paid back at?
But, but it depends on how you just set up your resolution if you did get back into it. It could be one that allows you to, from a seed money, you pay it, but those funds allowed to be rolled into the MSBU to be recouped.
Okay. Do you have, I know these are, these are old numbers. I understand. But do you have costs for these projects somewhere?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay. Could you email us those?
Absolutely.
Okay. Just give us a general idea. All right. Anyone else?
And they're, they're coming from a work session that was presented from 2011.
Sure. Okay. Commissioner Satcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You mentioned $15,000 as a typical assessment that would be paid off over the assessment period. What would be a typical assessment period? How many years?
I said 10 or 15. Most traditionally, it's usually a 10-year. Depending on the extreme costs, I'm aware that I think 15 is authorized at least.
Thank you. That's all. All right. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate you coming down, sir. Okay, we're going to move on then to Development Services' presentation on code enforcement.
This is actually public safety, but if, primarily, public safety with, with code, with Development Services supporting. But I think Commissioner Ron was going to give a little bit of a presentation with some background really quickly.
Absolutely. Commissioner Ron, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, being that, I probably wear out code enforcement more than anybody else does as a, in a district. What I thought was important, we've had a lot of conversations with code enforcement on what their abilities are to do, what they're allowed to do, what they can do, what they can't do, their finding mechanisms, how we get, how we get to a point of where we're finding someone, the magistrate system, the total amount of fines that we have that haven't been collected yet to date. So I thought it was important that we get in front of the board as a whole and try to come up with an overall policy of where we want this to go as far as collections and fines that are out there outstanding. And I know George and his team will go through that with us. But we're also going to bring in code enhancement, which is the, the team. gonna bring in code enhancement, which is the, the team in Developmental Services that goes out and does all the inspections on homeowner construction, make sure the warrants, the permits are being done correctly, that type of stuff. So I thought it was important we get in front of the board at one time, one place, go through this, and then knock it out. So that's why I appreciate all the, being here this morning, thinking. Steve's here also, and there's Jody, and she's here, Director's also here, so I'll let them take it away.
Good morning. I'm George McCorkle, Division Chief of Code Enforcement. So this morning, we'll provide you with a general overview of code enforcement operations as well as a comparison to what, or the differences between code enforcement and code enhancement. If we can go to the next slide, please? So in code enforcement, we're primarily dealing with the code of ordinances. This generally revolves around your property maintenance and structural standards. It includes your overgrown lots, lot clearing, anything property-related, and that's really talking about the condition of the property. Right-of-way vehicle-related complaints, that's unregistered vehicles, vehicles that are, that are not operable. We deal with unlicensed contractors, demos of homes that the building official has declared unsafe. We inspect the massage parlors in the county, sexually-oriented businesses, pain clinics, tow companies. We're responsible for the vacant property registration, snipe sign enforcement removal, emergency access gates in the county, and we have countless other responsibilities dealing with like beach patrol. On the weekends, you see us out there doing parking enforcement, alcohol enforcement. We assist other departments throughout the county when they have special events, whether it's public works or maybe a library having issues with parking at, at like downtown. So we're pretty responsible with helping others. Code enhancement, on the other side, I'll let Chris talk about their responsibilities.
Okay. Sure. Next slide, please.
Morning, Commissioners. Chris Weiskopf with...
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
Thank you. Chris Weiskopf with Code Enhancement for Development Services. Just to, going on what Mr. McCorkle said for code enforcement, code enhancement primarily is gonna handle all the functions under the Land Development Code, which are directly related to development services, which are your permitting cases. That's work without permits, whether it be electrical, plumbing, mechanical. We take care of expired permits, fences that require flood review, stop work orders, which is either work without permits or work beyond the scope, accessory structures and waterfront structures. Then we go into zoning, which are our accessory uses, temporary uses, and uses within specific zoning districts. We also handle environmental cases, which are your wetland conservation areas and tree protection, and include stormwater as well. And then our development, which are earthmoving, site plan approvals, adverse impacts, and then during disaster situations, whether it be man-made or natural disasters, we are the lead agency for damage assessment. We do disaster situations, like I said, crisis track application is what's used, and we have our assistance from our building inspectors and of course, code enforcement as well. And we work real close with code enforcement when they do sweeps and the such, so that we can look at land development code violations along with their property maintenance code violations. And I'll turn this back over to Mr. McCorkle. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. So in code enforcement, we have one chief, two administrative assistants. I've included the captain position, which is a new position requested in this new budget, 24 budget, three lieutenants, and nineteen officers. And again, the nineteen officers includes one position that was requested in the 24 This is a breakdown of where the code enforcement complaints are coming in. This is just the first six months of the year. This here shows, again, the first six months of the year, we've received five thousand, actually, we've opened five thousand two hundred fifty-five complaints. We've closed three thousand nine hundred and sixty. Of the complaints opened, two hundred and eleven were issued a notice to appear, and thirty-nine were sent before the special magistrate. So you can tell that we have roughly about a seventy-five percent complaint rate. Our authority in code enforcement comes from Florida Statute 162. We have no trespass authority, so we can essentially only be where we can legally be. That's a sidewalk or right-of-way, we can't trespass on a people's property. The statute requires that we provide notices, specific hearings, postings have to be done according to statute. That's if, if we're issuing somebody a notice to appear, or notice of violation, I'm sorry, then we have to either give it to them personal service or we have to post it in two locations. Again, it's all outlined by 162. It sets forth the fine structure, and it also says that we cannot accept anonymous complaints except for life safety issues. The statute also limits foreclosures, but it does allow us to pursue the imposing fines, liens, and compliance orders. The one thing that we can't do is force compliance.
It also limits the fines, right?
Correct.
So it limits the, the amount of the fines.
And Commissioner Ron has a quick question.
Hey, George, real quick, on your trespass, can you explain to how far you're allowed to go onto a property? I know they keep talking about the mailman rule. That also goes for MSO too, correct? To how far you could actually go onto a premise to inspect or anything like that?
Sure. So essentially, we can only be where we can legally be. So if we wanna go to the front door and attempt to make contact, we can do that. We take it a step further. If we approach a property and see a no trespassing sign, we're not even gonna go on the property. We've already been told the sign's there, it's posted, they don't want us there, so our next course of action is gonna be a phone call, maybe send them a certified letter. Nothing beneficial, no great conversation will take place once we enter that property and try to make contact. That's just coming from experience in law enforcement.
Well, we know that we have, in certain districts, we have a problem with rental units where they're allowing the homeless to occupy carports and things like that. They put up these blue screens. We can't see, we can't look behind the veil is what the issue is, correct? According to statute.
Correct. So there's the, you know, where, where the curtilage begins, we can't go beyond that. So if we go up to a property and we see that they've got these curtains or tarps draped around it, essentially what we're gonna do is notify the responsible party, whether it's the property owner or the tenant, and say, look, you've got some homeless living here, first thing you need to come into compliance is have them removed. If, a lot of times, these places are vacant, they're out of state, the people are non-responsive, and it's very difficult for us to track somebody down to take action. So we lean heavily on the sheriff's office, and hopefully, their presence would hopefully deter people from congregating in those parks.
Yeah, I think that's a problem with, where the citizens don't understand the fact, they think you can just go onto a property, bang on the door, go on, go into a garage, go into a backyard or wherever, and they don't understand the statutes that we have to fall under. Also, when it comes to the anonymous reporting, is it, if someone reports a complaint through a homeowner association, is their name still brought forward? And like, so like if someone goes to a homeowner association, homeowner association calls 311 to file a complaint, is that person's name still of record? Because that's a big concern when people are filing these complaints on code enforcement or code enhancement, that their name's gonna get known to the whole neighborhood and there's gonna be retaliation and things like that. So if it goes to an HOA, is their name still public record?
We, I submitted an RLS last year to get clarification on how that with an HOA can, these can be reported. And the opinion from the county attorney's office is if somebody from the HOA is gonna want to make a complaint, they still have to provide his or her name, but they can use the HOA address. So if somebody were to request a public record, yes, their identity would be released to the public.
Okay.
But it's not our practice to go around handing out the reporting party's information.
I know, I just said, some of the elderly folks, when they go to make a complaint, they're just a little nervous that their name's gonna get out there and then there's gonna be retaliation by whoever it is, be it the owner next door, or be it, you know, whatever they're doing in that, that, whatever they're doing on that property, there's gonna be some retaliation.
One of the things that we do is we keep track of where these complaints are coming in. If we see a large increase in a specific area, that's when will prompt us, we need to do a sweep in this neighborhood, because obviously, we're, we're seeing a lot of calls coming in.
Yeah, we're doing a lot of sweeping.
We're doing a lot of sweeps.
Thank you.
Going back to the Florida Statute 162, this is kind of our process when we receive a complaint, is, it's always voluntary compliance. That's, at the end of the day, that's what we wanna see. So the first step is what we would call a informal method. It's just to inform and educate the resident or the property owner. We do this through by, through providing them a courtesy notice. We provide them a reasonable amount of time to correct the violation, which is generally no more than thirty days. And as mentioned before, state law prohibits anonymous complaints. The law, the statute says they have to provide his or her name. The next method is a more formal method. This would be a notice to appear. The, the violator would be responsible for appearing before the county court judge. The judge may impose a fine not to exceed five hundred dollars. The, in this case, the fine applies to the person. You'll see a difference between an NTA and a special magistrate hearing. If the person fails to pay the fine, they could potentially have their driving privileges suspended, and if they want to appeal the county court judge, they could appeal it to the circuit court. What's unique about the NTA again is that there's no compliance order, it's simply a punitive process. Another tool in our tool belt is the special magistrate process. This is a quasi-judicial process where they can accrue daily fines if they're found in violation. So if it's a first-time violation, the daily fine cannot exceed a thousand dollars per day per violation. If it's a repeat violation, the daily fine cannot exceed five thousand per day per violation. And if the special magistrate finds that the, the violation is irreparable or irreversible, it cannot exceed fifteen thousand per violation. Through this process, though, we can recover some of our actual costs, whether it's a board-up, a lot clearing, mowing, advertising, certified mailing, and in the special magistrate, the magistrate does issue a compliance order. So if the violation is not brought into compliance by the date set by the magistrate, daily fines start to accrue.
Hey, George, real quick, how many magistrates do we currently have?
We have four. We're working with the county attorney's office to hopefully reduce that to two. Four sometimes can be a bit challenging because if a case is presented before one magistrate, you now have to wait until that magistrate returns back, so you could have four months before the case is heard again, so it gets continued quite some time.
So when these cases get continued, do the fines continue also, or do they stop once they go in front of the magistrate?
No. Generally, if something's being continued, the fines aren't accruing yet. It's the, the magistrate has ordered them, or given a, an extension, if you will, say you've got thirty days, but the problem is it can't be heard again till the, till the magistrate comes back to his...
So these bad players could continue doing what they're doing while they're in this continuance or whatever, and...
Well, it, it can happen, yes, it does happen, but our first step is generally to issue a notice to appear. That way, it gets them before the county judge, and a lot of times, that, that stops the process, so we don't get to the magistrate process.
Okay. All right, thanks.
But it is possible something could get hung up in the special magistrate process just by the fact either he hears it, gives them thirty days to come into compliance, but he can't come back before the magistrate for four months. So it's just kinda hanging out there until his next hearing.
All right, thanks.
There is a process that if somebody has fines on the property, they can request to have them reduced. They would apply for a fine reduction, submit it to code enforcement, I'd review it to make sure it's complete and thorough, and then I would submit it to the public safety director. Director Fisk would review it, and she would go through some of the factors that we're looking for to determine whether or not the offer they're making is reasonable. So some of what we're looking for is the nature or gravity of the violation, the actions taken to correct the violation, the timeframe of compliance order and compliance date, cost to correct the violation, and again, we ask that they submit proof of those costs, and other violations of the property or other property in the county. And also, we look at hardships. Is the owner of the, who was the owner of the property when the lien was, or the fine was imposed? Is it homesteaded, not homesteaded, and is it interfering with the sale of the property? If the director approves of it, it'll get sent back before the special magistrate, who will review the case. And essentially, what the magistrate is asking is if code enforcement agrees with what's being offered. If the magistrate, if we agree and the magistrate accepts it, then gets sent before this board here. If the BOC approves it, then the violator has ninety days to pay the reduced fine, or the fine will revert back to its original amount. We have significant interactions with the county attorney's office. The county attorney's office oversees our special magistrate hearings. They provide us with legal research and opinions, initiate legal proceedings such as foreclosures and injunctions. They assist with achievement tax deeds, recovering liens from surplus funds. In the past twelve months, we submitted fourteen RLSs, and we have regular conversations with somebody from the county attorney's office. This shows you rough, rough numbers on the, the liens that exist in the county with code enforcement liens. The one titled fines with liens changes daily, since some of these fines are accruing daily. And then we have other properties that have reached the twenty-year limitation, so they're falling off and those fines are no longer collectible. We currently have almost twenty thousand dollars in lot clearing liens outstanding, three thousand in mowing, and then nearly twenty thousand in board up and demolition.
Hey, George, real quick, so our total fines outstanding right now that are into the county are twenty-six million, three hundred and thirty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-five cents, correct?
That's a rough idea. Yes, sir.
So that's how much this bad players out there owe us?
Correct.
Okay. And then our collection methods are how? I mean, do we go out and, I mean, how are we collecting this twenty-six million bucks of the taxpayer dollars?
Well, if we get the captain's position, that officer's position, then we're gonna try to, we're gonna go back to some of these old cases, look and see if they're in compliance, and if they are, provide them with an application to get the fines reduced. A lot of these places have either inherited, inherited issues or just simply flat-out refuse to come into compliance. In those cases, we are working with the county attorney's office to recover those costs and get them into complaints.
Okay. I know for a fact in my district, we have one gentleman that's about nine hundred and seventy thousand dollars on his property as it sits today. How would we go about collecting that? I mean, we don't wanna be a litigious or punitive county, but still, we have, if, if I don't pay my parking, my speeding ticket, I lose my license. I know the past, the board has had, had a position of reducing fines continually, but then that takes away some of the teeth that code enforcement has and the code enforcement officers have, correct? Of being able to go out there and enforce the codes here within Manatee County.
Well, at the end of the, the day, what we want is compliance. If they're in compliance, we're not going back out there trying to recover the costs. We're usually waiting for the property to sale, to sell, or for the, the twenty years to reach its limit, and that's when the code enforcement liens fall off and they're longer collectible. So we don't really have anything in place where we're going out currently to recover these costs.
So I know we've talked about with the county attorney...
Could I, could I just respond to that too?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but local governments all over the state struggle with this because, as you can see, the, the Florida legislature has dealt us a pretty tight hand in terms of what we can and can't do. It's important to remember that the fines that accrue in code enforcement accrue as liens on the property. They don't accrue as personal obligations of individuals. So when you're talking about collecting, it's not like collecting a credit card debt. The available remedy is foreclosure, and that's something we can do. But you can imagine, let's suppose we foreclosed on twenty-six million dollars worth of property in Manatee County, we could, in theory, put a lot of property on, on the public ownership instead of on the tax rolls. So what I've seen around the state, other local governments do is try to sort of triage these when they realize this stuff has been piling up for years. What are we gonna do with it to, to, to sort of flush it, to work, work through all of this? There are a number of different tools that other local governments have used to go back through everything that's been sitting there for a long time and figure out what to do with them. I was in Orange County when they did that there, and they created a separate group to look at each one of them and bring recommended resolutions for each one, to try to get a lot of them off the books, to reduce it to just the active legit cases. But it takes work and it takes some resources to put that together.
So, Mr. County Attorney, as we've talked about, banged around, that's why I wanted to have this conversation in front of the board today.
Right, and we talked about it was probably a good idea to have it.
Outside counsel potentially to go out there, and, you know, I don't wanna, I don't think we need to go after, you know, the little old lady who's got a thousand dollar fine on her property that because she had a car that's unregistered that was there and they, and she just forgot about it. Is there some type of procedure or policy we could put into place that would set the limitations on what we would do or who we'd go after, or should we just get outside counsel and say, look, these are the worst of the worst of the worst, let's go get them?
If you hand it over to outside counsel, you're handing it, handing it over to them to foreclose. to foreclose. And, you know, I've been asked a couple of times, not by the current staff, well, will you guys go ahead and foreclose on, on property for code enforcement fines? And I've said, not without the board telling me to, because I know how that plays out. You're going to have a property owner come down here and public comment one morning and say, the county is foreclosing on my, my house. It's a really sensitive issue. I mean, it's something we have to be careful about. I can certainly hire outside counsel if that's what you all want me to do, and I will, if that's what you're telling me to do. Not a big deal, we will, we will make that happen. But I do think that, you know, before we hand things off to lawyers to go to court, we might want to come up with a process for working through these. 26 million is a lot, and I think we need to know, the board needs to know, how many of those are really active cases where people aren't in compliance? And how many of those are just fines that have been accruing there for years, or have sat there for years and haven't been paid? And there has to be some kind of breakdown of this.
Correct.
Before we start giving things to lawyers and going after individuals' property.
Correct. Yeah, we do, we do have that. We have a spreadsheet that shows which ones are in violation, which ones are not, which ones are accruing fines, where fines have maxed out. We have it all broke down by year.
Okay. I, I, I just would, as your counsel advised, that the board ought to see that information before you make a decision on what step you want to take in terms of how you're going to take action on it.
Well, and no, and I agree, but the issue is here is that we have code enforcement. The only way they can enforce is by fining. The only way you, when you fine, the fine has to have some type of punitive damage to it, be it whatever that dam, whatever that, that process is. So we either say, okay, code enforcement, go out there and do your job, we're going to do this and this, and whatever, or hey, you know, let's go out there and slap some fines on the property, and let's be all happy and sing kumbaya. I mean, we got to either, it can't be, there can't be a gray area with this. It has to be that we need to enforce the laws of Manatee County, and we do that through code enforcement and code enhancement. And what is the remedy for that if they're a bad player?
I, I do understand, sir.
Okay, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not coming after you, I'm just asking a question.
I, I think the difficulty is that the statute says we fine the property, the fines accrue on the property, and at some point, we can foreclose, or we can wait till the property sells, in which case, we can insist that we get paid whatever fines have accrued. And a lot of them sit there for a very long time. I mean, I have to admit, 26 million is a pretty staggering number. So it'd probably be a good idea if we could work through that, and those that are not really active cases, figure out how to get rid of those. And they, those have to come back to the board for the board to figure out what to do with them. And then focus on those that are truly the active cases, because those are the cases commissioners are getting calls about in their districts.
I mean, yeah, I, I think where I wanted to go with this is just get the board's flavor for where they wanted to be at with regard to giving code enforcement the teeth that they need to have to go out and do their job, and to go out and do their job the best they can. They go out there every day, they're great at what they do. We have a great code enforcement crew and code enhancement team, and I just want to be able to give them the tools they need to have to go out there and do their job and enforce the laws of Manatee County.
Yes, sir, thank you. Commissioner Cruz, you're next, sir.
Yeah, I mean, how, what are we really talking? We have $26 million worth of fines, but this is clearly an inflated number. If you look at lot clearing, mowing, board up, they're, they're de minimum, 19 grand, three grand, 26 million is obviously staggering, but, you know, that's not 26,000 old ladies with $1,000 worth of fine on it by any stretch of the imagination. It's probably like 10 commercial properties that make up $20 million of it, and then 6 million that scatter on everything else. We have properties sitting on Stairway 64 and in other places that have probably been accruing fines for years and years and years. So, you know, what's the, what's the median fine on that? I mean, realistically, what are we talking here?
Well, too, we keep in mind that some of these fines are accruing for nearly 20 years.
That's my point, that's my point. So this isn't going out and hiring outside counsel to collect 26 million, like this is some obscene amount of, of accounts that we have to chase, all of them. This could be like, like, off the top of your head, I know you don't maybe have this number, maybe you do. If I took the top 10, how much of the top 10 largest make, what's the total there out of 26 million?
I went through the top 20.
Okay.
And they were, the top 20 were all over a half million dollars, some exceeding $1 million.
Okay.
These are residential lots who have constructed something without a permit and have refused to apply for the permit or come into compliance, and the fines are just accruing daily.
Okay, so realistically, it's 20 accounts that make up, for the most part, all of this, at least all of it that's egregious enough that would matter to us?
There's roughly maybe, maybe 20 that would have, well, there's not quite 20. There's, there's less than 10 that have over a million dollars on that one.
Okay, so about 10 of them make up half.
And the rest are smaller accruing fines.
Okay, that's, that's probably what I was saying. And when we file liens, one, do we, is there a notice to lender when we file liens? Or is it, or is it recorded someplace where a quality lender would notice that there's a lien on them?
We recorded the lien with the clerk's office.
Okay. Are liens classified as superior liens? Do they supersede the mortgage lender?
I'd have to defer to the county attorney's office, because we go back and forth on this.
Like, are ta, are taxes due? But do, but do liens for code enforcement supersede the lender?
I think the lot clearing liens do, but I don't know if the code enforcement liens do. And I have had to tussle with banks before in my career about this issue.
Okay, that's, that's important to know, then, when we come back to have a real discussion.
But I make another point, Commissioner Cruz, that I think kind of goes to what you're saying. You know, if you have a, a large number of them that are unpermitted structures, the building code and the land development code give us the ability to seek injunctive relief for those without having to spend a lot of time in the code enforcement context. But that goes through either the building official or the planning official. So, you know, that's, that's one area where we could triage some of these, and maybe there's another way to deal with them, to bring them into compliance. I was aware that it sounds like about $10 million of the 26 million is for violations of, for unpermitted structures, and you have other ways you can deal with unpermitted structures besides code enforcement. So I just would like to see those, in other words, like, to see if we could break those out and see if there's a more efficient way to deal with them.
Sure.
Yeah, so to really make a decision when this comes back in front of us in a decision-making setting, you know, really to know, what's that top 10, top 20? It's not $26 million worth, it's $26 million worth of liens, but it's not 26 million accounts we're chasing, it's not 26,000 counts, it's like 10 to 15, maybe 20 on the outside.
Right, there's, it's not many.
Accounts that real estate cha-chasing. You know, what, what does our lien look like? What's our, what's our realistic option of ever collecting anything? Because if it's not superior to the mortgage, a sale, yeah, I guess it matters a little bit, because you can cloud the title a little bit, but it's not preventing a sale in theory. It could just trend with the, with the property. I'd like to know where the lien is relative to that, and really, what kind of teeth we have with those liens, or if they're just, nah, we recorded it, but it's, you know, we're so far down the list that the HOA has their hand out before we do. And, and I'd like to know what other options we have, or what other options have other people done? You know, are there options where we can say, hey, you know, for the next 12 months, we're giving 50 cents on the dollar payoff. If you fix your problem and pay us our lien, let's clear some of this. Maybe you get some of the big ones that do owe a million dollars, say, okay, for a half million dollar discount, I can go in, fix whatever the problem was, and hand them 50 cents on the dollar, or whatever the number is for the lien. It's free money to us, we're not collecting it right now anyway. It saves us the headache of going after it. Maybe there's some, some creative solutions to encourage people, sort of like when they encourage people to bring money back in from Ireland and other places from a business standpoint. Maybe there's some sort of grace. I don't know, I'd like to see some options, I'd like to see what these liens really mean, because 26 million to me doesn't represent an egregious number, I think it's just a handful. And I'd like to know what our lien really is, so we can make a decision moving.
That number, it's probably 300 to 400 total violations that account for that, and maybe 10 or about a million dollars each.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard.
So, my issue is, if, if these are, if a lot of these huge fines are unpermitted structures on residential properties, I would, I'm inclined to deal with that a different way, because I don't like the idea of foreclosing on someone's property because they built an unpermitted shed and then refused to pay the fine. I, that, that just kind of tears me up inside, I don't like that at all. So I think if we can deal with it through injunctive relief or some other way, I, I just don't like the idea of taking someone's home for an unpermitted shed.
So as a member of the Board of RASM, of the Realtor Board Association, largest property rights advocacy group in the world, I also have trouble, the idea of government taking someone's property. But I also hear what Commissioner Ron is saying, and so I have a frustration where we're sort of caught in the middle here, where the state has tied our hands, and it's our only, seemingly our only form of enforcement in the end. But I'm not going to be a fan of, of taking someone's property, and I don't believe that the, the association is either, and I think that all of us are likely to hear from them if that's the direction that we choose to go. They are, they're very active and very vocal. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Commissioner Cruz's point, for example, I referenced it earlier in the conversation, we have one home in Whitfield Estates that is completely unpermitted, did unpermitted work, unpermitted seawall, added a garage, added two-car garage, added second story. He's at 970,000, 75,000 right now. So to your point, yeah, there's probably just 20 out there that are big time fines, but how do we go after that person? That's the question to the board, is how would the board, pretty want to be with that when we go after, the house is never going to be worth that. You know, the property's never going to be worth that, it's on the canal, but, I mean, we're never going to get 975,000 out of this guy. So how do we want to handle, to your point, how do we want to move forward treating these type of cases?
Commissioner Cruz, you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I put myself on the board for that. That's another thing I want to see now, I want to see exactly what these, these fines are, what these, what these code violations were. I mean, I, I'm along with you. If, if the description is they added a garage for their own personal cars on their own personal property, I honestly don't care. It's their own personal property. You have to show me why that was a problem. I, I don't like a lot of the stuff we're doing anywhere. No, your shed is one foot too close to the sidewalk, so knock your entire shed down, because we set arbitrary setback requirements. Or you, you put up a, you put up a dock where you weren't supposed to, you put up a gazebo by your pool. I don't care, do that anyway, it's your property. I hate those rules that we have on our books as is, I'd rather get rid of the rules than charge the fine. So I want to see what these are, because maybe the problem is, we're just a little too aggressive in terms of our rules and regulations than we are in collecting the fines for arbitrary rules we put in place 10 years ago. They're probably antiquated, and half this board or a majority of this board don't like in the first place. I'd like to see what these are, actually, first and foremost, because if they're silly things like this, I'd rather just get rid of it, say, look, change the, change the rules and get rid of the fine, not charge them a fine because somebody 20 years ago made some rule that a garage can't be more than 40 feet, and they built it 42 because they had a, you know, because they, they made a mistake. That's what I'd, I'd like to see that, too, especially on those top 10, top 20. What are these fines exactly? If it's housing, if it's creating a homeless camp in their carport, different story, and that's fixable. If it's, yeah, your shed's six inches too close to my sidewalk, I, I don't care. I, I think that's a bad rule in the first place.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bearden.
I completely agree with Commissioner Ballard, Commissioner Cruz, and Commissioner Ben Austin-Bridge. I think it's definitely, these fines is definitely something we need to look at, maybe the, and moving forward, are some of these that we could just say, okay, hey, look, listen, moving forward, we're going to let this one go, but moving forward, you got to do A, B, and C. And, and then, because we've been gray for the last 20 years. We've been gray as a county for the last 20 years, and we haven't done anything as, as far as make sure the stipulations that are put in place in the enforcement that, that's being enforced is kind of, you know, it's been kind of gray. We haven't really, you know, you know, moved that forward. So my thing is that, you know, I'm definitely, as Commissioner Cruz said, we'd like to look at some of these and see, see if there's something that we can do in regards to what they are. And moving forward, maybe there's something that we could do to hold certain things accountable, right, that are kind of crazy. But, you know, we, we've been gray as a county for the last 20 years, I think, so it's, it's like, we haven't held anybody really accountable for anything. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With your leave, Courtney's computer's not working, so she was going to say something. Is that okay?
I don't think it has, it doesn't let me request to speak. I was just going to say, so we, some of the more complex land development code-related things are what typically would get, you know, stop work order. And, and we work, we try to work as collaboratively as possible with the homeowners, so that those small onesies, twosies, you know, I, I think back to some of the ones that, that we've been working on with George and with Chris. And we try to work with the homeowners as much we can. The, the best thing ever is if they just get the thing permitted and we can move forward. So I think magistrate is usually the last resort. So I think it, one of the slides was really representative, I think Commissioner Cruz talks about kind of a project funnel with the number that finally get to, you know, violation, and we talk about that with land use, too. The number that actually go to magistrate is when, you know, there's, they just refuse to get into compliance. So it gets to that point that you just can't get past. But we have a lot that we work with every day that are just complicated, but as long as someone's trying to work with us, we will work with them. And I just wanted to, to say that, because we will do, you know, the, the one foot difference, we'll try to work as much as we can. We understand that people have like, you know, everyone has their own livelihood, can be tough.
What if, George, Mr. County Attorney, what if you two brief us individually on the 10 most egregious cases that you have? Brief us on what our options would be, what the viola, obviously what the violations are, length of time, you know, what, what sort of, you know, it obviously has to be, you know, 100,000-foot elevation, right? We don't get too in the weeds on 10 of them, but just give us an idea of what we're dealing with for those 10, and what our legal options would be, and, and see what the, take the temperature of the board, and see where everybody is on it. How, how does the board feel about that? And we'll take those 10 and, you know, see, we'll come back and talk in a, in a voting meeting and see what we want to do.
We're happy to do that, we're happy to work with staff to, to talk to each of you individually. We will need to get a little bit more of that information.
Sure.
Ahead of time, please.
Yeah, because I mean, the majority of us don't like the, the foreclosure option, but you never say never, because I, you know, I don't know the merits of any of these cases, you know? So we would have to, I feel like we have to double in the details, we have to see what's, what each case is and weigh each of them on their, on their own merit. But I think we should start with the 10 most egregious. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to, well, first of all, just say, yeah, as we move forward, I think that's a good idea to get some of the merits on those cases, and then also, just in general, say, I understand Commissioner, I believe I understand Commissioner Ron's point and goals here and in support of, of that, of those goals, so I hope we can work together to get a workable solution for those active cases that are, you know, hurting neighborhoods and places that people want to, where we live. A different side of things, if we've come to the end of that particular discussion, but still underneath this general topic of code, Mr. Clegg, I wanted to ask you, at some point, I was going back through my emails, but I don't believe I found it, maybe I had it to begin with. Regardless, can you just update us some on what our ordinances are on the massage parlors and the sign ordinances and those types of things? I mean, I was reading through it, has anything changed on that in the last three, four years?
Well, we adopted the massage ordinance a couple of years ago. There was no massage parlor ordinance until, I want to say, December of 2019.
Okay.
And then, of course, everybody kind of slacked off on enforcement during COVID. Some of that was law enforcement, on the law enforcement side, because they just felt like they were, they couldn't deal with it during the COVID situation. Since then, they have ramped up enforcement again, and we did get an injunction and get one of those establishments shut down, and they basically left the state. I don't know where we stand on enforcement activities at this point, maybe it's something we shouldn't talk about publicly, I'm not sure if there's more going on there than meets the eye. We have not updated the ordinance since it was first adopted. If you recall, I think leading up to the recess, there was a discussion about the trafficking sign, which is a statutory requirement for quite a few businesses. I honestly don't remember if it's required in massage establishments.
Off the top of my head, I'm not, I'm not sure.
But it's certainly something that if the board wants us to tweak that ordinance, and I did look at Hillsborough, because someone, I think it was Commissioner Bearden, mentioned Hillsborough, maybe it was you, Commissioner Satcher, that has a, a broader ordinance that requires that sign in a, in a broader class of businesses than just the statutory list. And if the board wants to adopt that here in Manatee County, it's not that difficult. But as yet, we have not done that, and we haven't been tasked with doing that. But as yet, we have not done that, and we haven't been tasked with doing that.
Yeah, I think that it's just such a serious issue that we deal with, and, you know, right now, just blowing everyone's expectations. There's a movie in theaters, The Sound of Freedom, that's just amazing movie and puts a spotlight on the issue of human trafficking. But the sad thing, you know, it talks about what's going on internationally, but of course, we know that it happens right here in our communities. And these traffickers are smart. They keep, when someone is under eighteen and they're being trafficked, they keep it out of the public eye as long as they can. Then when they get over eighteen, they have, you know, sad to say, but strategies that keep people, you know, these victims, keep it under wraps and try to keep it out of the public eye. But I think we can do better on that. If it was Hillsborough, but I thought it, I may have told you wrong then, because I think we should also look into Polk County. So if I told you Hillsborough, I may have been off, because I believe it's Polk County that has a sign ordinance that, honestly, a captain took the county commission and said, let's go to this place. And they walked in and the whole commission, you know, and it was a bipartisan, you know, there were Republicans and Democrats on that county commission, and everyone was moved significantly and saddened by what they saw and said, we've got to do something to help these people. And so they used sign ordinances as a vehicle to give the public and law enforcement and code enforcement more access, and I think they've had some success in that. But I would like us to look at that and beef it up, because the sad truth is, we're driving by these places all the time, each of us on our way home, and they say, you know, massage, and they're open after midnight with that sign on, and that's not, you know, it's not massage that's going on. And the most, you know, heart-wrenching part of the entire discussion is that most of those people, they don't want to be there. They would much rather be somewhere else. But through coercion, exploitation, intimidation, threats of violence and actual, and real violence are being forced into those situations. And I think that we owe it to them to do our part in stymying those businesses in the future. Those illicit, I mean, they should be illegal, they are illegal, it's just really hard to catch, you know, what they're doing. But I think we could do that moving forward. If the board doesn't have an objection to that, I'd love to see us beef up those ordinances. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ron, and then Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To Commissioner Satcher's point, yeah, most of those are in my district, again, the, these type of businesses are. George, could you explain, once you get a call, what you're allowed to do when you approach these businesses? As far as, can you go inside? Can you monitor? Can you bring MSO in? How do you guys help get these things shut down on the code enforcement side or even code enhancement side?
We do routine inspections on these facilities, so they're subject to an inspection during their normal business hours. So we're in there looking for, there's a few things that the ordinance outlines that they have to have, and we're making sure, like, the doors aren't locked, there's no window coverings, certain things we're looking for. We bring in outside resources, too, to look at statutory requirements. So we're usually not going in there by ourselves, we usually have another entity going in with us.
And you guys, are you doing this surprise inspection? So you're coordinating with MSO and popping into these places, just, you know, surprise, go, hey, we're here, let us inspect? And are they required that, once you come onsite and say, we're doing inspection, you got MSO with you, are they required to allow you onsite, or can you say, look, this is a private business, you guys need to go do something else?
You know, they are subject to inspection, but yes, they can decline us entering into the property, and then we'd have to go back and apply for an inspection warrant to get back in.
Okay. County Attorney, real quick, on these businesses, you know, these aren't hand-in-stone and stuff like that, you know, legit places, are we, are they not required, if there are a massage facility, to have a licensed massage therapist license posted on there and that person be onsite? Or, because, I mean, we don't have any business ordinances and licensing in Manatee County, but this is a state license that you have to have. So is that person required to be there and they're required to be, have their license posted?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ron, my understanding is the answer to that is yes. Florida law requires that they have licensed massage therapists onsite, and they also have to publish or place that license where people can see it. So when you go into a legitimate massage therapist establishment, you will see the licenses in the waiting area. You'll also see that the windows are not curtained, that there's open transparency there. Our own ordinance says that if they fail to post a license, then they are in violation of our ordinance. That was the main hook, if you will, that we used to bring them under our code enforcement and law enforcement authority. But I honestly don't know, and maybe, George, you can answer this. If we have placed in our ordinance, I don't remember if we've placed something that says they must have a therapist onsite at all times. We could, if we have not.
I don't believe we have, because usually we defer to the Department of Health.
Okay.
They partner with us and issue fines for not having a licensed therapist onsite.
So when we first put this ordinance in place a couple of years ago, I distinctly remember saying to the board, we're going to want to revisit this, and we'll probably have to continue to tweak it as other local governments have, because you're dealing with a sector that is constantly trying to move out from under the rules. So if we want to look at those things again and bring them back to the board, you know, in the fall, and get it done by the end of the year, I think we could certainly do that. We typically start by sitting down with law enforcement and asking them, okay, are there additional tools that you want us to put in our ordinance to make it easier for you to go in and cite them for violations of state law? So we did that last time. We put the ordinance together in cooperation with a couple of people in the sheriff's office, and we can certainly look at it again.
Well, and the last one, I got raided and shut down. I mean, we have judges now that are becoming very favorable on our part when we present these cases to them to shut these things down, either my House of Prostitution or something of that nature, to shut these things down permanently.
Now, can I, just pardon me for interrupting, but it's important to say that when we do that, we have a very strong set of law enforcement arrest records. That is really key to getting that injunctive relief, and we've had some success in that regard. We do have judges that if we can put the evidence in front of them, they have, they are courageous about issuing those orders, but we have to have the case to put in front of them to do that.
So what you're saying, there is, to Commissioner Satcher's point, there is more teeth we can put into our ordinance addressing these businesses that are operating illegally, that aren't operating with maybe a licensed person onsite, to where, we could put some serious teeth in this, to where these guys can go in with MSO and start locking these places down.
Well, I don't want to overstate our position, Commissioner Ron, because to have a judge shut something down as a public nuisance takes more than just you're violating our ordinance because you didn't put a license up. There has to be evidence of ongoing criminal activity or activity that's a threat to the public health. And we have been successful in getting that in some of these cases, we have. But it takes more than, we can put a lot of things in the ordinance, but at the end of the day, to get an injunction to close it down, it's going to take more than that. It's going to take some arrest records in most cases. And we've shut down a number of sites, not just massage establishments, but other types of sites, where we've seen multiple arrests for all kinds of, you know, activity, where if we can get the records, we can get it shut down.
Right. Because, I mean, whatever we need to do, we just need to do it. I mean, just get it done. I mean, we need to take these places, we need to wipe these places out. I mean, there are scourge, there are criminal activity, they're hurting people, they're hurting our community, and we just need to get rid of them. Whatever we got to do.
Well said. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Bearden?
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I've been working on this. Right before the break, I spoke with Courtney. You know, I've spoke with some officers, I spoke with the sheriff, I spoke with the state attorney. You know, essentially, what they were, the feedback that I was getting from them was that, you know, in Sarasota, they've got a business license, there's none in Sarasota. I don't want to put a business license on Manatee County, right? That's not what we, but is there something that we can do to brainstorm for maybe, I mean, a general contractor has to have a license? And also, when it comes to the license, can they have a California license and then come in here, and is that viable? Or do they have to have a Florida license?
They have to have a Florida license.
They have to have a Florida license, right? Okay. So, I mean, there's several things that, you know, we could definitely do, but he said he could shut them down tomorrow with a business license, right? You know, because the problem is, is, let's just say, they do an undercover deal and they catch the person in the act, well, they just send that person off to another state, and they can't shut down the business, it's just the person that they have to charge. That's the issue that we're running into. So, I mean, it's something that we definitely need to talk about, definitely need to keep moving this needle forward. We can always get better. We can always ensure that, you know, these places are safe, if they are legitimate massage parlors, which we know a lot of them aren't. But I think it's definitely something that we need to continue to work on, for sure. And I think we all have a collective board here to be able to do that. We definitely want to make sure that, you know, that people who are being trafficked that, you know, we could step in and help, you know, as much as possible, so.
Yes, sir, and it's pretty well said. I would only add that a business license is just cast such a large net over the county to catch something so specific that I don't think I could support that. But, Mr. County Attorney, do you have clear enough direction from the board that we want to see something done on this, and we're going to lean on your legal opinion to bring us something back in the near future that will resolve this?
We've already talked about it within the office and about the need to get with code enforcement and circle back around with our compatriots at the sheriff's office and see where things stand. It is possible to have a business license requirement just for massage therapy establishments. You can do that. You have to staff it, have to make sure you provide the resources to manage it, and it has to apply to all of them, it has to apply to everyone.
And I wanted to say this, I wanted to say something, too, about what Bill's saying. So I had met with Commissioner Bearden right before the break, and I actually met with staff to talk about this, because we do already have contractor licensing required in the county. And so if it were, and I'm just putting this out there, but if we were to apply to certain types of businesses, that we do have all of the tools in place. I, obviously, there would be maybe a resource requirement, depending on the number, but that we have the tools through Acela to handle the licensing aspect.
Okay. Well, I think you have a pretty clear desire from the board to see that something come forward, so get to it. Anything else on code enforcement?
Yes.
Can I finish my presentation?
Well, Commissioner Satcher likes to click his button late, so.
Sorry, I thought I had it.
Yes, sir.
I apologize. Yeah, I just want to say, before we move forward with this, I am looking forward to us, you know, doubling our efforts and drilling down on this problem and seeing what we can do to change things. But I also just want to maybe put up a word of caution for all of us, or we're likely to get some pushback as we move forward. There's going to be, you know, there's going to be property owners that are renting to someone, that they want that person to keep paying the bills. There's going to be people that, oh, you can't do anything about that, it never, we're going to get some pushback, and it might not be where we expect it. And I think this is the board that can stick to our guns and continue to move forward, and with some haste. I mean, as Mr. Clegg said, these businesses tend to find the loophole and then move in that direction. So we'll have to be nimble and stick to our guns to really make a difference, but it's going to be worth it in the long run. And so I am looking forward to seeing progress made on this. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm going to put my name on the board.
Commissioner Bearden?
I agree with Commissioner Satcher here, is also, you know, with arcades, definitely something, if we're knocking this out, we might as well knock out something regarding arcades, because I'm getting a lot of calls on arcades, so.
The thing is, there's a Florida Gaming Commission that exists now, and so I think the state, Mr. County Attorney?
Have they preempted us?
Yeah, are we preempted on that because of the Florida Gaming Commission?
Well, they have in terms of what's legal or illegal gambling. There was a pretty significant action by MSO during the recess on arcades, and it looks like it got some pretty significant results in terms of quite a few of them leaving town. So, but, you know, if it's something that you want, that's more of an LDC issue, if you want the staff to look at it, they certainly can, in terms of how they're cited and permitted. I don't think, right now, they are a separate defined use in the land development code. I think they're basically just commercial, basically. I don't know if that's the case.
We define what an arcade is. I mean, I think that's what we have to look at, right?
Yeah, look into it. I think I'll bring something back.
Okay. Mr. McCorkle, you have an opportunity to sit down with each commissioner, go over your ten most egregious violators, and then sort of gauge the temperature of the board with the county attorney and bring that back to us. Is there more that you were looking for from the board today?
I would like to present to you a couple proposed actions that I've put together.
Okay.
For us to really go after some of this stuff, we need to rely heavily on the county attorney's office. So we have two options here. Let me just point out, too, the city of Braden uses the third-party attorney. They've been doing this since 2021, and they have sent fifty-four cases to that attorney of the fifty, for foreclosure. Of the fifty-four cases, only five were foreclosed on and sold at auction. What they're seeing is, as soon as they get that letter of foreclosure, they're calling code enforcement, what do I have to do to get into compliance? So that's what the city's seeing. Just wanted to point out some hard numbers to you. What we would like to do is to initiate legal action to bring some of these most egregious violations into compliance. We can do this through one of two options. One is to contract with a third-party attorney and pursue the foreclosure route, and we just need to keep in mind, this would not apply to homesteaded property. There'd be no out-of-pocket cost to the county, and payment to the third-party attorney is based upon what you covered. Another option is, code enforcement could fund one full-time employee position to the county attorney's office to work code enforcement issues, and this would be no cost to the county attorneys, or, I'm sorry, taxpayers. We would fund this through our lien searches. We currently contract with Orange Data. Manatee County charges $12.50 to run a lien search. The state average is $87. Miami Dade is charging 200, and Sarasota is charging 75. We have nearly 1,000 lien searches every month in Manatee County. In the last two months, I put the numbers up there. If we were to increase this to 50, we're still below the state average, and that would bring in $37.50 to the county for each lien search. This comes out to roughly $34,000 a year, or $34,000 a month, or $405,000 annually. This money could be used to fund the full-time attorney, as well as be placed back into the community for our lot clearing, mowing, board ups, and other needs to make areas safer. That's all I have.
Commissioner Bearden?
I was just wondering, how is it not costing the taxpayers any money? Is it because of the commissions through the third-party attorney's office?
These are lien searches, so if somebody's requesting a lien, they're paying for it. It's not the taxpayers across the border paying for it.
Okay.
Right now, it's a pass-through cost to Orange lien directly, right? They just pay what we pay, Orange lien, so it's just a pass-through.
So, Mr. Chairman, could I just make a couple comments on this? Because I would have appreciated if you all had talked to me about this before you put this out in front of the board. There's a lot of thought and decision-making that goes into how we provide legal counsel to the county. And bringing in a full-time attorney and staffing that person and paying their benefits makes sense with certain areas of practice, but for foreclosure, it just doesn't. It just doesn't. It just, it would be a losing proposition to the county and the taxpayers to do that. You don't just pay, I mean, you pay their salary, you pay all the supporting costs. I could see bringing in outside counsel to do this kind of work, but we're going to need a better idea of exactly what you're asking the client, which is the board, to do when we're talking about going into foreclosure actions, because I think Commissioner Ron, if you recall, when you met with us about this, and you had Doug Polk with me at the time, and he pointed out that when, as an outside law firm, he did that work for the city of Northport, they did a lot of foreclosures, and they wound up making a lot of payments on a lot of property they didn't want to own. So, you know, there's a downside to this that we need to think about, too. So I think, before we say we're going to expand the county attorney's office to do foreclosures, let's have a look at what the individual cases are, please, and get a better idea of what the options are for dealing with them. And let the board make the decision how they want to handle it, because there is, there are repercussions.
Yeah, why don't we look at the ten most egregious, see the temperature of the board? Go from there. Okay. All right. Anything else on code enforcement? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, Commissioners, I did, oh, you didn't listen at the beginning when I said, if you have anything you were discussing in today's agenda, stand up for public comment.
I asked before that.
Please, we'll open public comment, we'll open public comment now. Go ahead and step up to the microphone, state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to address the board, sir.
Okay. Yeah, sorry, I did ask ahead of time, and he told me to wait until after code enforcement stuff. So, Don Baldau, B-A-L-D-A-U-F, and So, Don Ballardoff, B-A-L-D-A-U-F, and Manatee County. And first, I want to say that, you know, Commissioner Satcher, Ballard, Bearden, you guys nailed it whenever you talked about these little things on people's property. Oh, and and Commissioner Cruz, I think, you did, you did really good on that. But the main reason I'm here is, you know, we heard that, that they, they follow Florida statute 162 for code enforcement. However, July 1 of 2021 was in the latest version of Florida statute 162 came into play. And in it, it lays out a code enforcement board. And that board consists of seven people, a, an architect, an engineer, a general contractor, a subcontractor, a businessperson, and a real estate person. And this is the closest thing that we have to a jury to hear these code enforcement cases. We haven't had it in the two years that it became law. And I find that is a, is a serious problem. And with these professionals listening to these cases, they could actually come up with solutions rather than punishment and penalties. And and I think, maybe you remember, I spoke to you maybe six or eight weeks ago about this with the old lady that just had her yard that was messed up and and everything. And we could, this board could bring in people to help clean these places up. The other thing that it, it calls for is for a county attorney to present these cases to the board, not the, not the code enforcement officer. And one case that comes to mind, and I agree with you guys, getting rid of these, some of these massage parlors that, you know, and maybe we can just limit the hours. If somebody's there at midnight, they're not there, you know, for for physical therapy, okay? We get that. But in one case that I saw in Judge Doyle's courtroom, was they, they did a raid, they brought a lady in, charged her with unlicensed, licensed therapy, but, or massage therapy, but turned out, and her attorney was there, because she didn't speak a lot of English, turned out she was the cleaning lady in the building and was the only person in the building. No, no other people in the whole building. And code enforcement's whole thing was, well, your honor, she was the only person in the building, so she must be guilty. I kind of think that if a county attorney was looking at that, he'd go, wait a minute, you know, I don't think that you came up with anything to support the fact that she was given a massage. So there's a case where having a county attorney reviewing these things to go in front of the board and present it would help.
Thank you, sir.
I guess I'm about out of time.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I've got a lot to say.
Thank you.
Sorry.
That's all right. Thank you. Okay, well, is there anyone else for public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment at this time. I have some new business I wanted to discuss real quick, and it was in reference to emails that we received, I guess over the weekend, regarding the search for a county administrator. And there's a group that sent out a pretty mass email showing, I guess they said that they'd reached out to the county, did not receive information regarding the search for the administrator, and so they reached out directly to our search firm, and our search firm gave them a shortlist as well as, and I see Commissioner Cruz grabbing his microphone already, because he, he responded, so I do want to hear from Commissioner Cruz, because his, his response was, was good. So anyway, there was a, a shortlist provided to these people, so that the consultant responded to them and gave them the shortlist and plus all of the others that didn't make the cut. And this was all new information to me. I didn't have any of this information, and and I had, I went through and reviewed, because I had reviewed some of these resumes already, and not having met any of them, going strictly off of resumes, I had a four that I liked, and three of them were not in, on the shortlist, three of the four that I liked, anyway. But no one had communicated this with, like, you know, there was no one for me to tell this to, or no one reached out. And unless I simply slipped through the cracks and all of you were communicating with the consultant and gave the, you know, worked out the shortlist with you guys, and I just got slipped through the cracks, I don't know. But, but no one communicated with me, and three of the four that I liked were not on the shortlist. Commissioner Cruz, you want to make some comments?
Yeah, I turned off my computer, so I couldn't put myself on. Yeah, I, I asked questions about how this came about, because we're getting a lot of people saying, oh, we're hiding stuff, we're not being transparent, the school board did this, the school board did that. We haven't seen this stuff yet. Like, like, I asked last week, when are we going to get these, these resumes and applications or, and I was told we were going to get a link today. And then yesterday or day before, an email goes out with every single applicant and their resumes all linked in before, that's literally the first time I've seen it. So if there's, if there's a lack of transparency, it's a lack of transparency to this board, as much as it is to. And nobody knows how it got to the top-tier list and the, the second tier. We've been on recess. We haven't voted on anything yet. We haven't even seen the resumes yet. My guess is, because as some of these were coming in, it's all public record, we were getting some emails, and the, the consultant was like, hey, these five look decent, and these four, you know, are something you guys should keep an eye on. Someone must have just compiled that and said, well, if they mention them in email, I guess this is maybe the top tier. We haven't looked at these things yet. I didn't even like a lot of the people that were sent over to us as the top, like, why is this a top tier? There's no chance. I guess my time's up, but, but I, I, we don't know where this came from. This wasn't a lack of transparency. We promised everyone transparency. We, we haven't seen anything yet, and it kind of upset me, and it, I'm questioning why the consultant sent this out, and there's no redaction on there. Every single one of those resumes have cell phone numbers, email addresses, home addresses. I mean, are we going to start having these applicant, applicants getting phone calls on their cell phone, like yelling at them to pull their application if somebody else? I'm like, I, I don't know what happened. I'd like to get some answers myself, and I'd like to keep moving this process forward without these distractions.
Commissioner Bearden, then Commissioner Ron.
I just, I'm just trying to figure out, like, exactly, obviously, this is a discussion today, but how, how are we going to do this moving forward? Or is each one of us going to pick our top five that we think and then accumulate? Because I haven't heard anything, you know, just like you guys. I mean, I'm just kind of up in the air. I didn't know, maybe this is a great discussion to have, so I appreciate chairman bringing this up. But should it be to where we, we each pick our top five and then come in and then kind of look through that?
We have assigned the county attorney to, to guide us through this process.
So, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I'm also a little frustrated, I'll be honest with you. I had a conversation with the consultant, just checked in with him last week, and the, the plan is to bring all of the resumes to you and for the board to decide what the shortlist is. And that's what was described in the initial brochure or whatever it was that, that was presented to you back in June. So I'll have a chat with him this afternoon, and I understand he has put a link up and he has sent it to all of you this morning, but I agree with you, you should have received that first. And I'm a little bit, and I'm sorry you didn't, and I will get that straightened out in short order, but it is the board's decision and only the board's decision. And it has to be done in the sunshine, to shortlist and down to a narrower group and then go through the final selection process. So I will make sure that is clear.
Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with Commissioner Cruz 100%. We're, I don't know how a citizens group is now interviewing candidates and bringing them into A, A, A group and B group, and my concern is the people they put into the B group now might say, well, you know, who's, who's controlling this? And now, they might be a good candidate in the B group, that's going to be like, I'm not interested now, because I feel that I've been disclosed, or if someone out there really hasn't talked to their employer yet about wanting to move on, now they're out there, now they've been, they've been, they're out, they're out there. So, I mean, it's, it, it's real disheartening to me that a consultant, and I don't, we don't want to start this process over again, but it's real disheartening to me that a consultant would, would arbitrarily to some citizens group that, I don't even know who the citizens group is, I don't know who's the chair of it, who, part of it, or whatever. And now, this is all out there to the public, and like Commissioner Cruz said, these people's home addresses, their cell numbers, their personal email addresses are now out in public knowledge, which, I mean, I'm really, our consultant should have never done this.
I'm not sure you could, I'm not sure you could.
You know, but I, I'm just really, this is, this is breach.
But it is public record. You can't, you can't avoid sharing the resumes. They are public record. And I'm not sure that we, there is.
I mean, what, what a person's personal cell number and, and email address? Come on.
Commissioners, the, there's only very limited statutory exceptions that allow you to redact that personal information from a public record. And generally, the people who apply for these jobs are sophisticated enough that they protect themselves in how they do that. I hope that's what happened. I don't know for certain, I'll go back and look, but what I think is more aggravating is that you all should have the information about all the applicants first. No question about that, and I, I understood that you did, and I'm sorry that you do not. So, although as of this morning, I think you do, but you should have received that upfront. I agree with you, and I will make sure that doesn't happen again.
All right. Anything further? All right. Thank you, everybody. We're adjourned.